Okay, so we'll move on to what we're going to do now is I'll call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for the City Council?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Senanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here, and Glendale Housing Authority?
Authority members Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Karazian.
Here.
Okay, and the next item?
Next item is the report of the Clerk. Agenda for the November 1st, 2016, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, October 27, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And the item before you is Director of Community Development regarding City of Glendale and Glendale Housing Authority procedures for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, of 1970 as amended, and the state SEQA guidelines as amended. One, A, is City Council Resolution adopting City of Glendale and Glendale Housing Authority guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as amended, and state SEQA guidelines as amended. B is Housing Authority Resolution adopting City of Glendale and Glendale Housing Authority guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act as amended, and state SEQA guidelines as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Cho.
Yes, ma'am. Earlier this year, the Council gave direction as to the reforming and updating of our local SEQA guidelines, particularly in the aftermath of the dissolution of redevelopment. Council had made policy at that time, and staff moved forward with implementation of that policy. Council asked that such implementation come back and be discussed at an evening City Council meeting so that the community was well aware of these final details that would animate your direction. So with that, we'll have our planning administrator, Mr. Kraus, come forward and give you a very brief presentation that will talk about the implementation of the policy that you've directed.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of the Council and Housing Authority. This item was last heard by the City Council Housing Authority on September 13th of this year, and originally, staff had proposed making amendments to our SEQA guidelines that allow private developers to hire their own consultants and hold on to that contract with the city's staff, basically administering the EIR. And direction from that meeting resulted in the Housing Authority and City Council both directing us to go back essentially to the old SEQA guidelines we had prior to that, which was from 1993, that would allow, excuse me, that the city would prepare all the negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations, and then hire the consultants to prepare the EIRs, and we'd administer the contract with the consultants directly, and the applicants wouldn't be involved in that process at all. So we've made that modification to the previous proposal that we brought to you on September 3rd. The other procedural revisions that were made to that was that we would absorb the former redevelopment areas into the city and Housing Authority guidelines. So essentially, the entire city would be processed the same way. City staff would prepare negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations, and hire and control the contracts for EIRs to prepare for those projects that required it. As the other direction that we were told at the time was to look at having a list of pre-qualified EIR consultants to then select from, and essentially pick the next one on the list. So we'd have like a list of maybe eight to 10 consultants. You know, this applicant prepared the last one, we picked the next one on that list. But staff was a little concerned in doing that because we had a little bit of fear that that consultant would then learn that they're the next on the list, based on kind of where the guidelines are outlined, so that they would then just, you know, make the price a little bit higher than it would normally be if they were competing for that EIR contract. So we're recommending a quicker kind of RFP process, and we would send it out to at least three of the consultants that are on the list. And then, as part of that, we'd suggesting that the city manager be allowed to approve contracts up to $250,000 for the preparation of EIRs. And the reason why we're suggesting this is that would allow us to stay within the SEQA mandated one-year timeframe to actually complete the EIR. As part of that, then, the other contracts that the city would execute, the city manager would be staying at about a $100,000 limit. So we don't make any changes to that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, the $100,000?
Yeah, so essentially, we're only suggesting that $250,000 will be city manager authority for EIRs only.
And the $100,000 is for what?
$100,000 would be for all other contracts.
But you're saying staying at, is it 100, no? I thought it was 50.
That's correct. I believe it is 50 for all other PSAs. So these items that are ancillary to the environmental documents, what we are recommending in order to maintain some flow is that the environmental impact documents, which probably will actually, in some cases, exceed $250,000, at least give the authority, for my signing authority on these documents, 250, all the other ancillary documents that might accompany that for specialities would be up to $100,000.
And these are all SEQA-related documents?
Yes, related to these processes.
Okay, so we are requesting that we do have a pipeline project status as well. There's a few projects that are ongoing right now that already have EIRs under contract. So essentially, if they've had a contract, and this is, we're going by the September 20th, because originally, we're going to come back on September 20th with the revised guidelines. So if a development application has been deemed complete, and a valid contract between the applicant and qualified environmental consultants to prepare the environmental review, or an agreement such as an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city, and a valid contract between the applicant and a qualified environmental consultant is already in place, then we're recommended that those projects be given a pipeline status. As far as the remainder of the SEQA guidelines, we did have to make some just minor changes from the 1993 guidelines because there were some different, the development, basically, CDD, the planning used to be separate, now it's part of community development. We no longer have the planning division as a separate department, we now have the community development department, so we've made that change in there. And we've modified the director of planning to be director of community development, and then the zoning administrator, which no longer exists, to be the planning hearing officer. So at that point, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Sure.
All right, so I heard you, and I see the report where it says, "In order to conform with state mandated timelines for preparing an environmental review and streamline, the cap on administrative approval authority of professional services agreements for environmental preparation consultants will be increased to, increase from $50,000 to $150,000." Plain English, please, explain what that means in terms of how the timeline works, where and when it starts, and why is it all of a sudden necessary to have authority to approve $250,000 EIR contracts?
Okay, Mr. Senanian. So the way, when we first take an application in, we have to determine what level of environmental review is required for that. There's like a 30-day completeness window, so we have 30 days to determine the environmental document if we decide that an EIR is required, and then we deem the project complete. And we now have this RFP process kind of mixed in that. So we would send out the RFP to three consultants so that they can, you know, submit their proposals, we review them, and, you know, recommend to the director on which consultant would best do the job for essentially the least amount of money and still provide the proper adequate SEQA document. So that's kind of like, you know, we estimate that'd be like a three-to-four month process. So now, that's taken out of the year from the deemed complete, we have a year from deemed complete. So once the three-to-four months is out, then we're limited to, you know, what is that?
Whatever's left of that.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay.
And so we have that much time to prepare the actual document and get it certified by the approving party.
So, but how would that?
Okay, sorry, yeah, let me finish that. So in the pass process, that required us to then come to the City Council for approval of the contract, to then go out and hire the EIR consultant to prepare the document. So it kind of makes that part of it a little bit more streamlined. So we're saving, you know, a month to maybe a month and a half in order to, from the processing time to get the EIR completed.
It takes a month or a month and a half to bring the results of the RFP to council? Does it really?
Well, it certainly, yeah, it absolutely can. By the time, by the time that we will get all of the documentation from a private contractor and square it through risk, through legal, vet it through the various departments.
You need all that in order for you to approve it anyway. So that part of the process is, I assume, is calculated into the three-to-four months. So that's not anything extra that you're doing for council. All you'd be doing for council is, I assume, calendar it, print a report, a staff recommendation, and for us to look at it. I mean, this is, again, because this is giving, giving, council is in essence, giving up authority on a 200, I know it's EIR, but nevertheless, it's a contract, giving up, giving up its authority to approve 250,000 plus $100,000 contracts to staff. And I don't, I'm not hearing good, valid reasoning for it.
Well, I mean, if, Mr. Garpetian brought it up earlier, if there is no council meeting for, in that case, you just used Thanksgiving, it'll be three weeks before we actually get on that agenda. If...
That only actually adds to his argument that we should have more frequent meetings.
You shouldn't be counseling that many meetings.
And the council may want to have more frequent meetings, but to the extent that we coordinate council, we coordinate the advance agenda, which I provide to you on a regular basis, so that you know what's coming down the track, and if, for example, we take a month off between Christmas, middle of December, to middle of January, if we are not going to do that anymore, that's fine, but that's a policy choice that you have to make. If council's going to be traveling, and there is a project that is of particular interest to you, that you want to be present and participate in that particular discussion, well, then that has an impact. To the extent that there's this Clausewitzian friction that impacts the flow of items that make their way onto your agenda, you know from looking at that advance agenda, there are things that just get pushed back, and get pushed back, and get pushed back for any number of valid reasons, and what we're trying to do is reconcile with the council's directive of saying, no, we will control that process with the best way to comply with state law, and hopefully, I think, through the demonstration of the solutions that we're trying to provide, you know, get you to some degree where you're comfortable with the work that's coming, that's being produced.
I think we can work together to make it work within a year, but that's all I'll say.
Let me ask a follow-up question. The code change was only in DSP, part of the DSP, because only in downtown specific plan, the developers could go out and could have, in the past, they could have gone out and chose, okay, my question is, how does this work right now? We're not reinventing the wheel. I mean, how did we comply with the state mandates and for the projects that were outside the redevelopment agency area in last, last 10, 15, 20 years, 30 years?
The redevelopment projects are, the old redevelopment project zones were high-density commercial and industrial zones that are going to invite high-density types of projects that are going to be more complex. So the, if you think of Glendale and the relatively minimal amount of residential zones that we have, 85% of the usable land in the city is residential, and it's, a lot of it is going to be, especially in the central and northern part of the city, a lot of it's going to be single-family. So we're not going to see a whole lot of very significant, complex projects, and those will end up being mitigated negative decks, or there'll be other things that we can do in-house. Part of the staff's rationale in saying, well, can we continue with the process, maybe even expand the process, of allowing the developer to control that process of the SEQA document production, is the function of those zones are the ones that invite the larger projects that will have a full-blown EIR, let alone a $250,000, $300,000 EIR, if that makes sense to you. I mean, that's kind of the idea there.
No, I understand, I understand that the redevelopment area or downtown specific area, because they overlap, and that's why I'm saying DSP. They, the size of the projects are larger, of course, we understand that. But the ones that are outside, right up against it, adjacent to it, there are projects that are going to require EIR, as we know right now, there are a few projects that are being challenged at this time, there are three or four that I know, and they're outside, and they have to go through the same process on obtaining an EIR, and they have to go through the same system, same process of the city hiring the consultant to go through it. So how did we manage our timeline by coming to council and council approving these EIRs, going back and forth? I mean, because the timeline should be the same. I know that hiring a consultant on a larger project may take another two weeks longer, but basically, the process is the same if you're hiring a consultant on a smaller project or a larger project. How do we, how do we manage that? How did we manage that all these years?
You managed it because you didn't have the workload that you're now putting onto the same level of staff.
Ah, so now we're coming back to my, okay, that's a different discussion.
We had said throughout this whole process, it really wasn't a function of workload, because at this point, we've gotten to a point by cutting back the number of staff that we have throughout the city, that we could handle the workload as we have it today. As the cycle turns right now, we're able to continue providing the same level of service. Well, now, what the council has asked us to do is to have greater process, not just in those old areas, but in all areas. And again, the incremental increase in the amount of work, you ask, well, how did we do it before? Well, we didn't have to do this before. We did, we did all the stuff that was outside of the redevelopment project, and the redevelopment project is not just the DSP. It goes all the way out to East Colorado, all the way out to West Colorado, to San Fernando Road, the Creative Corridor, down to the South Anchor at San Fernando and Glendale. And so more work will be there, and so it's just a matter of trying to put 10 pounds into a five-pound bag. And to the extent that we offered a policy solution, the council very justifiably said, no, don't want to go there, we will control that process. Okay, we're going to control that process, well, then, we need to find a way to still keep the same, as much as we can, the same velocity of these applications that are coming across, because if we don't, then you start to get the phone calls from those applicants that are saying, why is this thing taking so long? How come I can't move it forward? And that phone call then comes to filler to myself, and I come back to you and say, well, which way do we want it? Because we can have it one way, or we can have it the other way, but it's very difficult to have it both.
I understand that. We're not asking to, I mean, we are asking to have it both ways, but, again, I don't know. I think, I think we need to think about it really hard. This is a large increase.
Yeah, I think, if I can just add, frankly, I think this is on there because we had, when we had the discussion about these guidelines last time, this issue was raised, and I think from a couple of council members, we heard you were open to some flexibility on some of the limits, so that's why we brought it back. So we're here. So if you don't want to approve it, then that's fine.
Also, you will have pre-approved the consultants, right? You're talking about shortlisting it already?
Mm-hmm.
And that list will come to us at some point?
Uh-uh.
Or no? Because if that list came to the council and we said, all right, we're fine with these 10, then it really wouldn't matter which of the 10 they pick after that. So, I mean, it seems to me that, I don't have a problem with you picking from that list, as long as we all agree the list is okay.
Okay, let me, let me just make one clarification, if I may. When we say 250,000, or 50,000, or 100,000, this is the amount that the developer is paying, not the city.
Correct.
Right? So it's not a city budget that is being increased from 50,000 to 250,000. It's, the developer has to go out, before he could go out or she could go out and hire a consultant, now we are hiring on their behalf. So this is their money. But what I want to make sure overall is, the consultants that are on our approved list, I got few calls, phone calls from both sides, on the preservation side as well as the development side, that they don't want to have anybody who has any affiliations with any groups on that list. So you have to be very careful, because we are choosing on their behalf. We are choosing on their behalf. So we cannot choose people who are for the developers, if we know, I mean, as far as we know, or for the group that may come out later and oppose this project or appeal this project.
The only thing I would say to that, Councilman Garpetian, is every environmental consultant out there has at one time or another worked for a project that's controversial on one side or the other. So it's going to be, it would be almost impossible, or at least very difficult, to find somebody who hasn't worked on a project that's been controversial in this town.
And still navigate between the fact that some of these developers and some of these consultants may be working together in other jurisdictions, and so they have a conflict where they can't work together here, which kind of argues against the next-up mentality of, you know, we're just going to take the next consultant. So we would, we would have to have a no-conflict waiver from the consultants, they will have to fill that and say, you know, I'm not working at this time with somebody else, we will give you that price, and then, you know, we would move forward. The devil is in, absolutely in the details. That's why when we brought this the first time, the staff wasn't trying to find some way to twist our mustache and say, ah, we can either do less work, or we can have, you know, evil consultants and evil developers go do evil things out in the community. In the real world, in our real world, it ends up that there is inherent conflict that just slowed, the friction of all of this just slows down. That's all it is. And maybe, as Mike indicates, the compromise is, let us go forward with the 50,000 as we have it in bringing contracts to you. Let us bring that forward, and we may be 180 degrees wrong, and if we are, then you won't get those phone calls. And if we aren't wrong, then you will get the phone calls, but the beauty is, we can make the changes as we go.
So let me, let me ask a follow-up to Mr. Garpetian's question. The 250, I understand, is the fee, it's assumed to be the fees that would be ultimately paid by the developer. The $100,000 in other professional services would not, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, if, there could be something that's ancillary to a project, sometimes projects grow and change. We also, at a future meeting, want to come back to you and talk about our procurement overall. The cost of services, cost of labor, all those things in a more holistic way, and if you don't want to vote on the $100,000 for ancillary services tonight, that's absolutely fine, because we'll bring that back to you as part of the larger discussion that Ms. Beers had indicated on the next agenda, dealing with all of our procurement, because that's part of that friction as well, and then just focus on the 250. But if you don't want to do the 250, then, then please don't do it, because I don't want you to resent the vote that you take. Let us go forward at the existing 100 or 50,000.
So, Mr. Senanian, he hasn't spoken.
But I just want to, you know, I'd like to remind my colleague that if, for any reason, you think that there's something wrong with the EIR, it still has to come to us for certification and approval, and perhaps issuing a statement of overriding concern. So it, at the end of the day, if you think it's a slanted EIR by a crooked consultant, I mean, we have the opportunity...
That's not what I was, no, that's not what I was referring to. But who on this council has the time to review every EIR that comes to us for approval and make an educated decision or comment about the EIR that is 2,000 pages?
Yeah, but on the other hand, you're asking us to inspect and review the qualifications of an EIR consultant, which I think is even more arcane than reviewing an EIR project that sets forth certain findings and conclusions.
Isn't that why we are here for? Because there was a challenge that they said the developers should not hire their own consultants because their consultants are going to basically write the report the way they want it. And it came to the city, we said, okay, we will hire them, right?
Not exactly, though. But we keep in mind, the whole reason we had to upgrade our, we had to update our SEQA guidelines regardless, and the real policy discussion is, shall we continue the process in those old redevelopment zones that we have done for the last 40 years, or should we expand it, or should we contract it? And council made policy. Our recommendation was to expand it to all non-residential zones, to economize on time. Council said, no, we will control that process throughout. But that was the rationale, not that there was anything, there was nothing more to it. And so, and I mean this with all, with all respect to all five of you, and all six, is the council makes the policy, the staff implements that policy. And so when you say, well, you know, am I going to review all of the 2,000 pages of an EIR, as Mr. Najarian indicates, and possibly to Councilmember Friedman's question, are you going to read the SOQ for 10 different consultants? I mean, think of the process we just went through, well, think of the process we just went through this afternoon by way of Rock Haven, and that was for actual RFPs, and you got a binder as, as, you know...
Right. Like, I think we're going the wrong direction. I think this council made a decision, and now we are kind of thinking about it again as to, was this a right decision or a wrong decision? Because we put a lot more burden on the staff by going citywide and say, okay, no one can hire a consultant, let the staff do it, because it's a huge load of work, and it's creating this turbulence inside the, and my other question was, up to this point, when the developers hire their own consultants, how many of them were challenged because the EIR was not right? That is the question that I didn't ask last time when I took that vote, and I...
But relatively few, and the ones that have been challenged more recently have been on the historical dynamic of, historical significance.
Sure.
As opposed to air quality, or on traffic, or on any of the other things that are much more broad, and so we know we need to shore up that aspect of it. And we can, and we will, I mean, to the extent that the council made policy, we do not begrudge you that authority at all. So council says, we will do all of it, and we, at the end of the day, are people pleasers. You, that's the policy of the council, we will move forward, and to the extent that you, we believe, based on what council had said previously, that you want us to do it in a way that balances the impacts on the folks that are paying that bill, as well as the benefit or potential impact to the community, this reflects that. If you, if you don't agree, that's fine, too, then let us go forward with the 50,000, just as it is now, and then we'll evaluate as we go. Our management motto, operate, evaluate, modulate, and we'll come back to you and say, I'm fine with doing that.
Councilmember Friedman, she has a point.
Well, I don't really have a strong, you know, this isn't super important to me or anything, either way we do it. I think the concern from the community was that it seemed like a very inherent conflict to having the developers hire and pay for consultants that they choose to evaluate things that could add great expense to their projects or even stop them from building. So the concern was, take it away from the developers and move it into a more neutral environment, to where you have pre-qualified consultants that are cycled through, that are then sort of assigned out based on their appropriateness to those developers who end up paying for the cost, but they become contractors with the city, so there's not that inherent or at least perception of a conflict. And I understand that, but I don't see why, to me, the preference that I think, where this should lie, is whatever body has the least kind of dog in the hunt. I mean, if the concern from the community was, we don't want the developers hiring them because we think that the consultants will feel obligated to deliver the type of report that the developers want because they're being hired by them, then to me, the least political body is actually staff, not this council, because we tend to get lobbied by developers, by opponents of projects, and we can become very political, whereas I think staff tends to be a little bit more insulated. Nobody even really knows who's picking those people, and, you know, they're sort of a much more bureaucratic face, not that you're faceless, of course.
Appreciate that.
But to the public, it's just staff. So I think that it actually gives more protections to the, you know, to the residents. And I would also say that you made a very good point, Mr. Garpetian, when you said that, unlike other contracts, this is not a contract really with the city.
That's right.
Which is why they usually come in front of us, because we're spending sort of city money. But in this case, even though we're spending the money, we're go-between, because that money ultimately gets billed back to the contract, to the developer. So I think that that makes a difference from the usual contracts, and gives me more feeling like I think we're, we're safe. But I think the important part is that there's going to be a certain number of pre-qualified consultants that the staff will cycle through. So I think if we have a chance to look at those and say, if there's any of them that we think are just terrible consultants or inappropriate, I think we have, we would probably have the chance to say, hey, staff, we just don't like this consultant. Am I correct in that, or wrong?
We hadn't anticipated, we, again, if, that's the policy the council makes, by all means, we hadn't anticipated doing that.
Well, I'm not saying that I feel that we need to, but if that makes the rest of the council feel more comfortable, rather than seeing these every single time, maybe that's a way of being able to keep the process moving, but make council feel that there's no consultant being slipped in that's just a terrible consultant. If I, assuming that's your concern, because I don't understand what else the concern is.
Just to follow up on what Councilmember Friedman was saying, exactly, that's why I asked that question, that how many of the EIRs in downtown, and we had all these large projects that went through already. I mean, we had so many of them that had gone through, 4,200 units, at least 20 projects, right? 25 projects went through. None of their EIRs, to my knowledge, were challenged, and they were all chosen by the developers. Am I correct, or am I not correct?
Many of them, not always.
Sorry?
Many of them, but not all of them.
If I could add to that real quick, when the developer was choosing which consultant to hire for their particular project, we would actually provide them the same list that we use for city projects, that we would then...
But how many of them, how many of the EIRs were challenged?
None of the ones for the downtown. The last one that was challenged would have been the downtown specific plan, which was our own EIR in a contract that we held.
Right.
And we hired the consultant.
And I think before that was the Americana brand, which again was...
Do you mean legally challenged, or do you mean questioned and...
Legally challenged. Legally challenged, because, like, we changed this, we're changing our ordinance, basically, based on the concern from the community, which is valid. But you change an ordinance based on facts as well, because if there were no challenges to any of the EIRs that was done for the large projects that we all, we were, communities concerned about, I don't know, I'm just second-guessing my...
Well, that's, I mean, that's not even in front of us right now, right? So, we already made the decision, you're right. You're saying, where was the evidence? Where was the bias? If it was biased, why weren't these EIRs challenged? Well, one EIR has been challenged since then, so that's a decision...
EIR that we paid for, that we held the contract for.
Exactly. So it is what it is at this point. Now in front of us is this 250 for the EIR and a 100, that's, that is our money. It's not, it's not the developer's money. I mean, we keep saying, well, it's not our, it's 100,000 is our money. So again, I would not support, I certainly wouldn't support the increase to 100,000 for the professional services that are to be approved by administrative approval authority. 250, again, if it's, we can move forward with the 50 and see if it doesn't work, increase it to 250. Or again, because 250 is not our money, it's not going to be the city's funds, the taxpayers' funds, you know, I could be flexible on that.
So would you, so then I guess my question to you is, would you be comfortable if we did not increase that fee and left it at 50,000? Or would you be comfortable if we raised it to 100,000?
100,000, it'll have to come back to you. Every EIR we're going to do is going to at least be in that $250,000 range. We just didn't pull that one out.
I see, okay.
I think if you go on a trial basis and see how would that work for a little while and bring it back.
I'm sorry, a trial basis?
Staying the way it is.
Stay the way it is. There would be no change to the policy.
Right.
And do you want to talk about the pipeline at all, Pratell? Pipeline status?
Wait, when you say stay the way it is, you mean to adopt this, but to--
Status quo, remain status quo, that's what--
Right now, if it stays at $50,000, it will come to council. So it stays that way for a while and see how does it work. And if you get all the phone calls and all the complaints and it's really taking too long, then we can come back and, you know, reopen this case.
But we're still supporting staff's provisions or recommendations that we use, that they have the list--
Right.
--of consultants.
It's coming to us.
Okay, right.
It's going to come to us.
I have, you don't have any more comments? I have a couple of cards, maybe we could go to that.
Well, there's the issue of the pipeline. Any comments on that?
You might want to take comments from the public first before making any decision on that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mike Mohill. Followed by Catherine Yurka.
Mayor Devine, would that be two minutes, three minutes?
I just need two minutes. I just need two minutes. Welcome back, Mayor. My name is Mike Mohill. This whole thing with the EIR was all because of the Aloft Hotel, we all recall, and the conflict of interest between the developers and the city and the residents. I think now that we're talking about taking the fox out of the hen house, as they would say, and having the city staff be more involved with deciding who the consultant's going to be, and that the developers will have no knowledge, they'll be, they will be as surprised as who the consultant will be as much as the residents. Let's try and keep this impartial. We have enough politics going on here, like one of the council people say, they've been lobbied by the developers. And I know you hate to be lobbied by the developers because if you do what they like you to do, come the reelection time, your hand will be out for the campaign contribution. So now your hand won't be out for a change. We have plenty of developers right now giving campaign contribution to several of our council people who are running for political office, as we all know. It's called pay-to-play. Thank you.
Catherine Yurka.
And just for the record, actually, you had it backwards on the Aloft Hotel. That wasn't the developer who selected that consultant.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Yurka. I was actually not going to speak on this issue, but some questions were raised that I thought I should address. One is Councilmember Garpetian, it's not an ordinance that's changing insofar as the EIR consultant selection, that's the SEQA guidelines, so it's something different. Also, there have been a lot of projects in Glendale, I think you mentioned 20 or 25. By no means all of those required EIRs. Many of them were handled with mitigated negative declarations or negative declarations. Some of them were declared categorically exempt from SEQA review, so nothing. In fact, there's a project that involves the demolition of a couple of single-family houses to develop property with 42 units. Originally, that was given a categorical exemption. So you're dealing with a much smaller number of EIRs than I think you were thinking. Also, I think the last EIR that I know of that was challenged was 3901 San Fernando Road. There was no litigation, but we very forcefully challenged that at city council and we lost. There were two other EIRs that we had grave concerns about, one involving the medical, mid-century brick medical office buildings on Central. One was the Streamline Modern Joann's Fabric Store. I think today we would have challenged those, certainly the brick office buildings. These were a few years ago. And we've just become a little more active and focused since then. And I would say that all three of those had the same historic resources consultant. This person is the go-to person for developers. And her job is to find buildings not to be historic resources. And in terms of the EIR consultant selection process, we're going to get people that the developers are more excited about, we're going to get people that the preservationists are more excited about. It's just how it works. No one's going to be happy 100% of the time, but there'll be more variation and more neutrality to the process.
So a question for the city manager, all these negative declarations that we had in downtown area, was that done by the SEQA guidelines and was done legally? Or it was--
It was done per the SEQA guidelines, but staff would have prepared those.
Right. But it was done by the guidelines?
Yes, because of the program-level EIR that we had.
Also, just to clarify, the approval authorities, the amounts that are at issue, those are an ordinance? Isn't that true? That's a proposed ordinance that's in front of us right now.
No.
I mean, no. I'm going to read, I'm going to read from your notes right now, from here. Says, "The Glendale SEQA guidelines and the proposed ordinance to clarify approval authority for local SEQA documents." I mean, what is that?
They can play with words if they want. I mean, it's a SEQA guidelines or ordinance, but it's, the SEQA is being challenged on the state level as well, and it's being, it's a big, big turbulence. So we don't want to get caught into that at this time, but I appreciate your--
Let's hear the city--
So when we brought this item back before you, I don't know, a month or two ago, or maybe it was a month ago, there was an ordinance, and that was, it wasn't on this approval authority, that was on, of the council to approve the contract, it was the approval authority of the city's lower boards and commissions to approve environmental documents, because we didn't have it specifically written into our code that they could do that. So there was a case that said, if you don't have that, then only the council can approve environmental documents. So we had to bring that. But that was the ordinance that issued. This item was staff report. There are the guidelines, so there's resolution approving the guidelines. And then the report did explain the change in approval authority. And what the report was trying to do was explain that staff was proposing a change in that administrative approval authority. So I hope that answers the question.
And I do want to clarify something, because I think I've heard you say it twice. The $250,000 was a ceiling for the manager to approve. We're going to do an RFP. It most likely could be higher than that.
Sure.
Might be lower. That's why it's not in the fee ordinance. We would do that, we would collect a deposit from the developer, enter into the contract, and then we would do the study. So, and to you, a statement that you made before, that the EIR is prepared for you as the decision-maker, not for the developer. Developer has to, the project has to have it, but it's an information document that's prepared for you. So we would hold the contract, we would do that. Again, and I think Eric had said before, under the old process, we would have the same oversight that we will when we're holding the contract. We will now do that administrative task as well.
But it just, and the last point I would make on that is that even though the EIR process could very well take 350,000 or even $400,000 for a larger project, is your staff in consultation with legal, in consultation with internal audit, in consultation with the finance department, that's just too much. That seemed like that was just a too large of a number. And so we settled on the 250,000.
Okay, so 250 was a compromise.
Among the staff, in terms of what we would recommend to council.
Does it create more?
It'll likely be more for those more significant projects.
And then it would be appropriate to bring back to you something more. That was our thought process.
And on the Aloft project, going back to this point, there seems to be some, the EIR was, the consultant for the EIR was chosen by the city.
Because it was outside of--
That was one example of there not being a conflict.
Just to clarify, it was a mitigated--
It was mitigated negative--
Mitigated negative declaration that we prepared.
Yeah.
We prepared.
We prepared that.
And it was outside the DSP. It was outside the--
That's the key.
Right. But apparently that case was the genesis for the whole--
Yes, yes.
--consultant being hired by city as opposed to--
Okay, so now we want to discuss the pipeline projects and how you feel about staff's recommendations. Do you have any questions or comments on that? I have two questions about the consultants, the pre-qualified list of consultants. Will we be readily able to--
If you so choose.
Okay. The public will be able to see those?
If you so choose.
How do we choose? How do we demonstrate our--
You provide that direction to us, and so we'll bring you, we'll do a call, a submittal. And I try to call through some of them and try to get it down to a list of eight or 10, and then bring you their submittals and have you call through those. And you tell us which ones you like.
The individual--
But I mean, I mean--
Qualifications.
That's what I mean, it's SOT. Qualifications, and we pick.
Well, aren't you going to do that for yourself?
I thought that you were going to do that, and then--
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood.
We would make it available to the public and to us.
Yeah, absolutely. We would list, if we did a process, yes, ma'am, we would publish the list of who these folks are, with links to their website.
Okay.
But I would just add, if we're at the $50,000 level, we're going to be bringing the ultimate successful proposal to you at the time we ask the council to approve the project. So I'm not sure we need to bring a list, a running list of those that we think are qualified until such time as council chooses to give you a broader authority.
But the pre-qualified list, I misunderstood the mayor's question, that pre-qualified list we would publicize so people knew who staff had vetted and put on the pre-qualified list. That's, yes.
Right, so it's available to the public and to us.
Yes, ma'am.
It is available. They have the list, approved list of consultants right now.